Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Thursday, February 16th, 2016. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor DePena. Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Almonte. Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, we are the University of Lawrence. Introducing our new president, one nation should allow individual with dignity and justice.
Thank you. We have no minutes for approval. Public participation, H. Mali.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaign promise of save Florence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and the senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers and support their union. Our city has been great city because of our hardworking DPW workers. If you workers and the best leadership our DPW workers has made our city great. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW worker in their collective bargaining negotiations. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrifice their safety so our citizen be safe. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Turnaround plan is working. We the citizens support our teachers and their union. Our public school has now more level one school, more higher school graduate, more MCAS improvement. Parent resource center for the first time in the history of our public school bring our parent and staff together. In these important two years, we remind you of your campaign promise. Save Florence, prosper Florence is only possible you as our elected official support our police officers and their union and our DPW and firefighters. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Next person on the list is Dick Russell. Good evening, Mr. Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dick Russell, reside 34 Cross Street in the city. Excuse me. Several things. Can someone in City Hall make peace with the Eagle Tribune so we can get news of what's happening in the city coming out of City Hall? If that isn't possible, can somebody start putting a posting, a daily rundown of what's happening on the city's website that's happening in this building? It's tough to get information late or secondhand now. Next. How come there's no private citizens/taxpayers are ever selected on to be on the committee to hunt for new department heads? Is it because the citizens/taxpayers don't have enough brains to make important decisions on hiring but have just enough brains to pay the bills for people that are hired we have no voice in? Last. The last council meeting, four people addressed the council of public participation. The last individual announced the following night there would be a public meeting in a public building, the library, regarding the proposed residency rule for city employees. I went for several reasons. First, I'm a resident and taxpayer and wish to observe what happened. Second, I went as a news gatherer for a local monthly publication just in case something earth-shattering happened. I'd love to be able to report to people of what transpired at the meeting, but 95 percent of the meeting was conducted in Spanish. I know only two words in Spanish, bodega and puta. I'm all for minorities getting breaks and help. Lawrence's population has been guessed at anywhere between 75 and 100,000. No accurate count exists. It's been estimated by some that Lawrence's Hispanic population is somewhere between 65 and 80 percent of those numbers. The question that I have is that what numerical value does the minority status shift from the Hispanics to the non-Hispanics? I realize that my statement may make some consider me to be a racist. I spent years as a surveyor dealing with numbers. Numbers don't lie. Therefore, I can't be a racist. I must be a realist. As always, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person is Alan Chesnut, Chetson, Jr. I apologize.
Excuse me? Alan Chetson? Yeah, from 36 Jefferson Street in South Lawrence.
Thank you. Welcome.
Excuse me?
Welcome.
Thank you. Three weeks ago, I'd say, I was unpleasantly surprised at walking outside my door on a beautiful sunny day with a quarter of an inch of grass, snow covering the grass, to find a brand-new $25 ticket on my car for inadvertently parking in front of my house. I live at 36 Jefferson Street. I know that there is a ordinance in place at the moment that requires us to move across the street on a 40-foot street with no weather in the offing, so to speak, you know, no emergencies, let's call it. I have, in the past, you know, forgot and nothing happened. All of a sudden, I get a ticket. I come to City Hall to find out that not only did I get a ticket, but they're adding five new police to the job of giving out more tickets. So, I can imagine that that's a good thing when the weather is bad. But, you know, tow them then, ticket them then. It has never been in my history of 56 years in Lawrence, which I'm 56 years old and lived here all my life, of getting tickets like that on clear days. It just seems common sense should be used when thinking about how bad the area is. Once, you know, I trip, and that's not only in South Lawrence. I mean, I live there and it's a pretty low-car, you know, parking problem. But what happens over in North Lawrence or even in the other tenement areas when you have all these 70,000 to 100,000 people that we don't know of maybe needing to park as well? So, my question to myself is, is it really about emergency snow removal or is it about getting extra money for the city? Is that what it's supposed to be about? I don't know. But the ordinance is really just overblown, I think, to be from November to April, I think it is.
Thank you.
From 12 to 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That's a long time to make people have to live with that. Just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Document 27215, Lawrence Municipal Code, Chapter 5.84, to be amended. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 272-2015, notice hereby given to City Council. We'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 16th, 2016, in City Council chambers, 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding, following new paragraph to the Lawrence Municipal Code, regulations concerning public donation collection bins to be inserted in proper order. The advertisement referenced the categories of the new ordinance and new chapter, including definitions, prohibitions, and standards, applicable applications for licensing, the fees to be charged for the license, violation and penalties for enforcement, severability of the ordinance, and implementation. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. This matter was published on February 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, just a question to, well, Pasquale, who is this man, you are? Oh, there you are. Sorry, I didn't see you. Could you just?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening. Nice to have you here. Could you just very quickly tell me, you know, the benefits of this to the work that you're doing?
I prepared a statement. Can I read it?
Yeah, you could read the statement if you feel more comfortable.
Okay, sure. There are many donation collection bins located throughout the city of Lawrence at places like schools, parking lots, of grocery stores, liquor stores, and city-owned properties, making it convenient for people to drop off unwanted clothes. Companies that operate these collection bins, however, currently don't need a permit and don't pay a fee for putting a collection bin on private or city-owned property. Unregulated donation bins currently do not pay for city permit and application fees. The lack of regulations for these donation bins has caused blight in our neighborhoods. The increase of donation bins around the city and the problems associated with them, like the blight added to our neighborhoods when the bins are not maintained by the owners, their owners, concerns that many of the bins are associated with organizations that are for-profit instead of nonprofit organizations. Inspection Services has developed in the regulation for the donation bins concerning these donation bins, such as imposing a fee for each donation bin and regulating how they look and are maintained. Included is a cap on the number of bins, 80 citywide, 16 per operator, and no more than two per location, and would impose fines on organizations and for collection bins that are maintained or without permits. The owner, leasing, or other person or legal entity took in control of the property where the donation collection bin is being maintained shall be jointly and severely liable for each violation thereof and payment of the fines assessed.
Right. So, Mr. Ruiz, am I okay just to say that this would be a way to help keep order in our city, to have them codify so that all these bins have a certain height, a certain?
Yes. Yeah, we're just trying to regulate them to keep the neighborhoods clean. Right now, a lot of them, they have a lot of graffiti on them, so we could regulate that, you know, that way we could find out who really owns them. A lot of times, we don't know who owned them. We've called, they don't, you know, they don't respond. So, I feel that if we hold the owners of the properties responsible and the neighborhoods, I mean, and the nonprofit organizations that, you know, hopefully though, because, you know, we've gone around, you know, there's mattresses, trash, all around these bins, so we just want to make sure the neighborhoods are clean.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that people want to help by putting in, you know, donating their clothing and putting it in this bin.
Yes.
And I've seen people do really stupid things.
Yes.
Light a match and throw it in there or throw garbage in there. It's just crazy. So, thank you. I think it's wonderful that you brought this up and that we'll be able to get a handle on it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilor Michael LaPlante, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Director Ruiz, I'm just going through this. One of the things that's inside this document is there's a fee associated, an annual fee of $150.
Yes.
For each donation collection bin. And if I understand what you're trying to do, what I'm understanding is that there are various nonprofit entities that have these bins that try to collect things for people who are less fortunate, mostly in our city but maybe elsewhere as well.
Yes.
So, I get everything you're trying to do here. Makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
Do we really want to put a fee like that on there for 150 bucks?
Yes, because as I called around, I did some investigation, these companies, especially Planet Aid, and they make millions of dollars a year with these bins.
They make what a year?
Millions of dollars a year. And they're out of, even though they're nonprofit, they sell them to places like China and other countries and, you know, they, you know, they, you know, they, that's why they want all these, all this stuff that goes in them, because they sell them, you know, as a lump sump and they make, they make millions.
That's what I'm trying to do, Mr. President. I want to be clear. Are you talking millions of dollars through Lawrence every year or through their?
No, through, through the whole, the whole organization.
So, because you believe that they have deep pockets.
Yes.
Essentially, you think that they're worthy of being, getting fees collected on them.
Yes.
If they weren't, if they didn't have deep pockets, the theory, the logic would be you would have some reservations?
Oh, yeah, we would probably go with a lower fee, maybe, you know, $100, you know, because, you know, we have, we have to get the stickers, you know, we have, there's, you know, there's a, you know, we have to get stickers, we have to do applications, printing, so, you know, we have to recoup those costs.
In your, again, Mr. President, in your research, how many organizations take advantage of these large bins, collection bins?
There's like four major ones right now.
Can you list them?
One of them, one of them is Planet Aid, the other one is Our Neighborhood, the other one is, it's a book company, I forget the exact name, and there's another, another one that I, I can't find the name on it because they're not clearly marked. So, there's no phone number, but there, you know, there's bins all over the city for this company, and we're still trying to locate who owns them. And with this bin, with this, with this regulation, if they don't, if we can't find who owns them and they, and they don't register them, then we have the right to tow them away.
I get all that. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around whether or not we think it's a good policy for, for groups that are doing something on, whose property are these things, on their own property? They have some?
No, they're, they're on city-owned property. They're on sidewalks, they're on, anyway, they just put them anywhere they want.
That changes the tone of this conversation a little bit, I think, if you're on a public way.
Yes.
If they're on a private way, you're still going to be finding, you're still going to be charging them a fee regardless of where they are?
Yeah, everybody should pay a fee, yes.
So, again, just do, I'm a little concerned that we have it in a public way as opposed to a private way or private, a private-owned area. If it's in a public way, you're doing a couple of things. You're either impeding someone from walking on a sidewalk.
Yes.
Or for a car, for either to park a car or for a car to go through. Most of our public ways fit either one of those two criteria.
Yes.
So, have you given any consideration about not allowing these things to be on a public way?
Well, yeah, that's part of the regulation that's in there, and they, they have to get, they, what they do is they have to come in, bring in a map, show where they're going to go, and then we approve where they're going to go. If they're on city-owned property, they can't be on city-owned property anymore. If they're on sidewalks, right now, they could put them anywhere they want. We can't really do much because there's no regulation to control that. So, that's why we, that's why we came up with this regulation, to try to control where they put them, how many they put, and they just don't plop them anywhere they want.
I guess, I guess we're all here to deliberate. I'm going to express to you my concern. I think you can sense where it is on this, just giving it some thought.
Sure.
Everything you say makes a lot of sense to me. I like the fact that you're regulating it, that we're trying to make our public way for the public good, you're allowing people to travel. I get all that stuff, makes perfect sense to me. If they're going to be putting something on a public way, they're going to be impending the rest of our streets from other activities, and there should be some sort of associated fee associated with it. My concern, though, I think if it's on a private area, if it's on a private property, my concern is that they're doing that, I'm not so, I guess there's a bit of a hesitancy on my part. I'm not sure I'm all the way there.
If, if they're going to put it on a?
I have a hesitancy about supporting something like that.
If, if they're going to put it on a private property, first of all, they have to get permission from the owner. They just can't put something on private property. So, they would have to get permission from the owner, an affidavit saying that, and the owners will also be responsible if there's, if they don't take care of these bins and this trash that we have now, because they're on these private properties, there's trash everywhere, you know, mattresses, sofas. I have pictures I could pass around, you know, to show you. I think I passed them out before, and so that way, you know, we could, we're going to go after the owner of the property and also the company.
My time is up, Council President, but I still have reservations on it.
You have one final question?
I just have reservations on, I haven't figured out yet how I'm going to deal with the fact that, that I may have some questions or some hesitancy on putting a fee associated with it on a, on a, it shouldn't be on a public way, and I guess you're going to be looking at that, as I understand it. If it's on a private way, I don't see why there, it should be a fee. Maybe they need to pay that property owner for the right to put their thing, their container on their personal private property.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes what happens is they, they have an agreement with the owner and the owner's making money, so.
Well, then that's, and that's a different, that's, that's a private, that's a private contract.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to get involved in that. But my concern is, I guess, when we have an organization trying to do some decent work in our city as a public policy, if that, if that is, if you can tell me that that work is coming to help our residents out?
Well, it's really not. It's going overseas. All, all this clothing is, from the research that I've done, all this clothing, all this stuff is going overseas. Nothing's really coming back here to the city.
So, those four organizations are not doing anything to help the residents of our city out?
They're not helping, they're not helping our citizens at all.
Okay.
From the research that I've done.
That changes the argument. Thank you.
Councilors, any further questions or comments?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
So, basically, you say that we only have four, four organizations that are doing this type of donations here in Lawrence.
That I know of.
There are more, that you know of?
Yes.
So, if there is any other organization that we really know that they're not making any money on this type of donations, once they get it out of here, do we have a way to waive this type of fees, $150, for a company that is really doing what they're supposed to do?
Well, um.
Because, I mean, I believe that we should have a fuller spectrum of, of the whole, the whole situation.
Yeah.
Knowing that there is organization up there that are doing the right thing, and they might want to come over here to Lawrence and maybe donate those applicants to Lawrence. I mean, there is a way that we can waive those fees over here.
Yeah, well, yeah, if they could prove to us that's going for a nonprofit organization or, or, you know, they, you know, they're doing something for Lawrence, then, you know, we could talk about that.
Yeah, but it's not on the ordinance.
Say again?
It's not on the ordinance right now.
No, but we, you know, we could, you know, we could probably, you know, we say, you know, we do the ordinance, you know, to put that in there.
All right. You say that they won't be able to be in public properties, and I mean, our city property, all right?
Yeah, well, yeah, right now, no one has the authority to put anything on city property.
Unless we have, they have a permit.
Unless they have, unless they have permission.
And that 150 fee, though, you think that they should have a kind of like a permit?
Say again?
For that fee, $150.
Yes.
So, you think that they should have a permit to use some, some places that belong to the city?
Well, yeah, if the city, if the city agrees to it and they want to put one there, then, you know, that's fine, yeah, that would be fine.
I like the idea of having this type of ordinance, but I think that still something's missing on here that we should have to be safe because I believe that we can be held liable for.
Well, the city attorney, you know, he reviewed this whole, you know, this whole ordinance, Charles Barty, you know, it went to him, he reviewed it. It's, you know, he researched all the other cities, what they have, and it's almost exactly what other ordinance, other ordinances have in different cities and towns.
Do you know what, which one of those?
I know one of them was Quincy, Braintree, Lynn, there's a few, there's a few, there was a few towns that he researched and that's, that's where we came up with, and then we, you know, we tweaked it to Lawrence.
Because my concern is like, we have, we've been getting donations from other towns, citizen towns here to come to Lawrence, and that is, that is, I don't know if, that is a correlation between the two, but I mean, I just want to be able to.
Yeah, but we're talking about donation bins. We're talking about the bins that they sit there.
Yeah, donation bins, yeah.
I mean, you know, we have, we have other organizations, you know, like in the churches and stuff like that, that, you know, that's, that's fine. We're not, we're not talking about that. We're just talking about the metal bins that just sit there and, you know, there's trash everywhere around them, and we need to regulate those because it's just too much trash everywhere, and they're an eyesore because they're all full of graffiti. So, that's, you know, that's the main goal that we're trying to, you know, take care of. You know, we're not trying to, you know, put anybody out of business. You know, I, from like, like I said, the research I did, these companies are making millions off this, you know. If you go on webs, on the website and, you know, you go on to, you know, Planet Aid, they're, they're from, they're from Boston, and, you know, it'll show you, you know, their, the history and what they make and everything like that. So, you know, we, you know, we, you know, we did a lot of research on it.
All right, number, one more question, please.
Any further questions?
I just have one more question.
Give me one second. Counselor, any other councilors which is to speak before Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yeah, I was waiting to let everybody else speak. Thank you, Council President. Just very quickly, you said that you want to put the fee of $150 because these organizations are making money from the materials they collect?
Yes.
Okay. I think similar to how you may give an organization some clothing and then they turn around and they sell it to people versus going to say to Isabel Melendez, who doesn't charge anyone for any of the clothing, and if you give her the clothing, you know that people that need it are getting it, right?
Yes.
And she will bring it to homeless people as opposed to other organizations who will use the clothing that you give for materials that you donate to sell it, you know?
Yeah, but that's, that's like, like, you know, like I stated before, that's, you know, that's those organizations that do that, we're not going after, you know, we're not doing anything with those organizations. All we're going after is the, is the donation collection bins. That's all we're going after. And there's really, you know, three or four companies and they're making money.
I'm just thinking it's similar.
Yeah.
That if you give, there are certain organizations that you can donate clothing or anything else that you have, and then they sell it to the people who need it, right? Versus going to, to an organization like Isabel Melendez, who gives everything out for free. So, that anything that you donate to her, you know, is going to go out to the homeless or to anybody else.
But that's not, that's not in this ordinance, though. That, that's not in this ordinance.
No, no, I know, I know.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm saying that to me, the concept of charging $150 for people who are making money off it, it rings a bell with me, resonates with the issue of you giving something out and then for the people that it's supposed to go to, they sell it to them rather than give it to them, you know? So, I'm, you know, I think that if you want to charge them a fee for doing the collection because they are in fact making money, you know, then that should be something.
And it's mainly administrative fee, you know, we, you know, we have to, you know, we have to do the printing, we have to send the, you know, the letters out, you know, we got to get all the tags to put on, on the bins and stuff, so it's, it's more like an administrative fee.
So, the $150 per?
Yeah.
Per?
Yeah.
Per collection bin, right?
Yes.
Is being used to then do the administrative?
Yes.
Work that you need to do to, to support that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the clarification there. Counselor Abdu?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Was any consideration given to exempting nonprofits from this fee?
I spoke to Planet Aid, they're the only ones that, that called back. I spoke to them, and they, they were fine with, with, you know, with the ordinance, they didn't have, you know, they didn't see anything wrong with it. They, they sent me a list of where all their bins are located. No, no one else has done that. So, Planet Aid has been cooperative with me, and they, you know, they, you know, they didn't have a problem with, with the owners because they know others, they, actually, they sent me information to help me write the ordinance.
And they are certified 501(c)(3) nonprofit?
I'm not, I'm not really sure. I know, I know that, that they, they ship the, you know, the, the stuff overseas and they, they make money.
So, the reason why I ask, I, I think, is along the lines of my colleague, and that is, for instance, I know a lot of the Catholic churches in Lawrence use St. Vincent de Paul, which has a shop here in Lawrence. I don't know what their processing mechanisms are, but, you know, you'd hate to see an organization that is a nonprofit and is theoretically possibly, as my previous colleagues had asked, if they are indeed redistributing those clothes locally.
They don't, they don't, they don't have donation bins. I, I checked with them.
St. Vincent de Paul?
Yeah.
There's four of them behind St. Patrick's Church.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see them.
There's another two over at Holy Rosary.
I haven't seen another one.
Okay.
Yeah.
East Kingston Street at the end, right by the railroad tracks, there's four there, and there's two behind Holy Rosary.
Okay.
Holy Rosary on, on Union? Um, Holy Rosary on, on Union Street? What's the Catholic church on Union Street?
On Union Street?
I don't know, I haven't seen them there.
Holy Rosary.
Yeah, I haven't seen them there.
Okay, thank you. Council President, I'd like to make, I'd like to see if the author of this motion would accept a friendly amendment. And the friendly amendment, we very simply look at, uh, five point eight, four point zero, four zero, the deals with fees. The spirit of the amendment would say that if, uh, if the, if the organization donates ten percent of whatever it is that they get to this, of, through those bins, back to the city, that that fee would be waived.
Okay.
Ten percent of the money? Or ten percent of the items?
Um, it's open to debate, I think ten percent of whatever that they get through the city of Lawrence, as long as ten percent goes back, ten percent of whatever they get in our city, ten percent of that goes back into our city, we would waive the one fifty. At least ten percent.
I accept that, I accept that, that amendment on the motion.
But just a point of clarity?
Point of clarification.
Yeah, I would like to know, I mean, 'cause that makes a lot of sense. To be clear, if we're talking about ten percent of what they make off bins that they, that they're taking from Lawrence, their collection bins from Lawrence, or if it's ten percent of what was collected there, you know, the materials that are there? How are we gonna, how are we gonna track that?
My, it's so that, there was going to be some challenges to it. The first challenge is, how do you decide what ten percent of what is? And so anything that you have would have a value to it. Uh, the IRS, for example, every time you bring in a chair, every time you bring in some clothing, there's essentially some dollar amount of fixed, generally speaking, in a very rough term, used things that you can get a tax credit or debate for. So if you're able to somehow get that amount, it's, some of it is self-reporting, quite frankly, and I'm, I'm flying on the seat of my pants a little bit on this, because, but I'm trying to get the spirit, which is, if we, what I wanna do is find some way to attach the fact that if they're able to somehow, if we're able to somehow capture and know what it is that they're getting, then I, I, I don't wanna see us charge them something, as long as we know it's going in. And I understand you got overhead costs as well, but that's, that's my.
So, you know, it would be easier just to lower the fee, um, you know, there's no way we're gonna track that. Very, very difficult to track that, because they, they, you know, they, you know, they, you know, they, everybody drops off the bins, you know, we don't know when they collect them, how much they collect. I mean, that's, you know, that's, you know, you need a clerk just to do that, you know, full-time.
But the, we don't, I don't, it's not on us to go ahead and figure out how much that is, it's up to the individual companies. You've already made some quotes this, through you, you've already made some quotes this evening in your research, of you were able to figure out or find out through the public domain, how much monies have gone, not only how much they went, but where they went to. You mentioned other countries that these things went to. So my sense is that, the, the answer, there may not be an answer. What I would recommend would be this, perhaps if, if, if the author be willing to table this matter here to find out that answer, then we can come back to figure out, yeah, that's doable or that's not doable, then, then I think we would, we could have a more of.
I, I feel it's not doable, I, I'd rather go with a, with a, with a, with a, a fee of maybe fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. That's, it's way, it's way too much, um, um, uh, you know, research, you, you, you know, it, we, we can't, we can't really track all that, it's, it's difficult. We, I had the hard time just finding what these bins were.
Again, Mr. President, the director's misunderstanding what I'm saying. It's not gonna be for the city to determine what the ten percent is. The organization needs to self-report that and certify that with an affidavit that paints the penalties of perjury, that exactly what they're putting in there is accurate and true. They attest to that. So, could they play games? Sure. This is, you can play games wherever you wanna play games. We do, oftentimes, the Commonwealth does things where you have to self-report. It's a very common situation across government. We may not do it as often in our city government, but we can do it here. Uh, it's something I think we should explore, and I realize we're outside of the box a little bit, 'cause we haven't done it, but I, I would at least.
I, I just feel all we're trying to do is trying to keep the city clean, um, keep the properties clean.
Sure.
I mean, uh, that's all we're trying to do, um.
We have one, one last councillor that wishes to speak, and, uh, that will be the last person to ask questions. We have thirty minutes on this debate.
Why don't we consider something like, if the organization serves the community of Lawrence, or it's from, from around the area, a local, a local organization that is willing to do that, like my colleague just pointed out, uh, the Church of Heath schools have three different ones. Why don't we waive the fee if they serve the community, or if they are from the local area?
Yeah, that's, that, no, that's, that's reasonable.
I have seen how they pick up those, those stuff, they just come in a truck, pick it up, and boom, and leave. And, uh, it's kinda like, you know, if, if they serve the community, and if they are from.
If they're local, that's reasonable, um.
Just one comment.
I mean, uh, I don't know if we're willing to do that, Stan?
We could, we could lower the fee, and if it's local, you know, we, we could waive the fee, I'm willing to go with that.
Local or an organization that serves the community? Because we might have, uh, an organization that is national-wise.
Yeah, it's, it's hard enough trying to get information from these people, um, they're, they're not, then, you know, we'll never, we'll never get information from them. And, uh, believe me, we've, we've been working, been working on this for over a year now.
So it's two different, two different things, the concept is different completely.
Council President, I'd like to re, I'd like to withdraw my motion and take what, what, what the coun, my councillor for District D is suggesting, which is they need to self-report that they're doing something. Maybe we don't look for that capture of that number. But, listen, if you're doing a marketing material for any one of those four communities or groups, one thing you're gonna be putting on there is, we're donating X number of things to the city of Lawrence or whatever. It's in their own interest to be able to brag and to publicize what they're doing, it's very natural. So, um, my sense is that, and I'm, I'm shocked to hear that they wouldn't wanna do that. It's how they get more people to donate more things.
I've, I've dealt with them, that's why. I've talked to them on the phone, I've, you know, it's hard to get, to get a hold of, uh, I, like, like I stated, Planet Aid, they've been cooperative, they've been very helpful, the other three haven't been.
Okay, so at this point, um.
Just a comment, um.
Okay, councillor Reyes, first, let me clarify, councillor La Plan has withdrawn the.
Yes, yes, yes. No, but I, I think everybody brought up a great point, um, this evening, but I think, you know, we need to start from somewhere. And I know we need to resolve this situation, clean the city. So while we don't do this, while we don't leave the motion how, as it is, and ask Mr. Ruiz to come back in a year, and if he needs to make any modifications in the amendments, we're gonna start from that. But I think at this point, he needs to start from somewhere. Just give it opportunity, just to see if he can collect more information and come back to us. This is how it's gonna work, this is what we can change, this didn't work, and, and we start from there.
Council President, would the, would the author be willing to put a sunset clause on this? Because oftentimes, we'll forget, if you put that in, say we have a year, and the year expires in a year, that way Mr. Ruiz will have to come back before the council to make sure that he reports to us. If not, we're gonna be caught up in a million different things, we won't remember this thing.
Right.
So in next February?
So February two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
You have set the rest.
Yes.
Okay, so and you're saying that, the amendment that I made?
She's gonna let it go and see how it works out.
Just let it go as it is now, or, you know, the first.
Organization that Mr., uh, councillor do, they're gonna have to pay four hundred and fifty dollars right now. Six hundred dollars right now, so we have an issue that we need to solve, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, if we just pass this like it is right now, they're gonna, local organization that might have those bins, like he pointed, they're gonna have to pay.
I thought we said we weren't gonna do that for local.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's the amendment.
Do you, councillor Reyes, do you accept the amendment proposed by councillor Rodriguez to waive it for local, um, organizations?
Yes.
Yes, so there is a motion on the floor, Mr. Clerk, can you please call the motion?
For the parliamentary, so we're all clear on what the motion is, can we have the?
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the motion?
I wish I was clear about the amendment myself. It's gone around a few times, there's a motion on the floor, uh, advanced by councillor Reyes, seconded by councillor.
De Peña.
De Peña, thank you. I'm getting there, um, with an amendment proposed by councillor Rodriguez for an agreement to waive, uh, the fee charged within the ordinance to local, uh, we'll say, organizations, rather than, I don't wanna call them charities.
Or, local, or organization that serve community.
To local organizations who provide community service, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So sunset clause, too, she.
Sunset clause is, uh.
Community of Lawrence.
I'm sorry?
Community of Lawrence.
Community of Lawrence, correct. In the sunset, in February, I'll certainly pick a date, the first or third Tuesday, next February seventeenth, I don't have the calendar.
But March first, 'cause it takes ten days or whatever.
Well, I didn't wanna pick a date that was not a council meeting date, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to question.
So the first Tuesday sounds good.
First Tuesday in March.
Okay. Now that answers the great issue.
If that clarifies it, then all yours, Council President.
That will be March second, two thousand seventeen.
March.
Oh, March seventh.
March seventh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move the question, Mr., uh, all those in favor, please say, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, Director Reyes. Uh, next item on the agenda is document two ninety six fifteen, stop sign request for four-way stop sign at the intersection of Spruce and Park Street. It was placed on the agenda by the mayor and myself as a, as a co-sponsored. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document two ninety six, two thousand fifteen, notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing Tuesday, February sixteenth, excuse me, two thousand sixteen, in council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding new paragraph to section ten, two, eight, one hundred concerning stop signs and flashing red signals to be inserted in proper order at Park Street, eastbound and westbound drivers at Spruce Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be given the opportunity as published on February eighth.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Uh, councillors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and waive the thirty days.
Motion has been made, is it, and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
You got the motion that I waived the thirty days?
Yep. Uh, document twenty eight sixteen, appropriation transfer from free cash reserves to city attorney litigation legal services on the amount of four hundred and seven thousand dollars. It's on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ayanello. Mr. Clerk?
Document twenty eight, two thousand sixteen, notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, in council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer funds as follows, from free cash to the city attorney's office. The amount of the transfer is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open.
Published on the eighth of February.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this document.
Motion to approve has been made, and properly second, those in favor? Discussion, councillor Maldonado.
Uh, Mr. Bodi, can you, uh, come? The microphone, please. Good evening, Mr. Bodi, how are you?
Sorry, I'm well, how are you?
Uh, can you, uh, explain to us what is going on and why do we need four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for litigation?
Yes, the primary, uh, basis for this increase is a couple of things. First of all, when we passed the budget last year, we level funded it, and I advised you at the time, and we were aware at the time that level funding it was not gonna satisfy all of the obligations of this department for this fiscal year, but we knew it was enough to get us through to the point where free cash would be determined, which in fact it has been. In addition, there are two major expenses, major additional expenses, uh, that we have undergone, um, one of which is the Di Adamo case, which is in trial at, uh, at Salem, at the Superior Court. In that case, we hired outside counsel as co-counsel. This is a coun, a councillor who is expert in the area of construction law, and it's an attorney that, uh, each of you should be somewhat familiar with, as he represents us in part on the high school litigation, as well as, uh, the school litigation for the mold remediation, uh, that being Jack McDonald. So Jack McDonald has come in as co-counsel to assist with the trial. The trial has, uh, has essentially wrapped up, there are a few loose ends we need to take care of. Um, that trial, we're anticipating between, um, co-counsel, as well as all the experts that were involved, we had to hire various systems experts, elevator experts, roofing experts, all of whom were necessary to testify at trial, uh, as well as the transcripts that cost us, uh, for all the depositions, uh, a hefty sum, something enabled of five thousand dollars for transcripts. So approximately, um, half of the amount that we're requesting is for that Di Adamo case, and the other half is for ongoing negotiations, uh, with outside counsel. Deitch Williams is handling that for us. That was, they were, uh, requested to do this work by the request of the overseer. The overseer has, um, been submitted this appropriation, and he has asked for his approval of these, these, or the supplementation of our budget, and he has signed off on it. So, uh, that's, I guess that's a very long way of saying that's basically what this is. It's approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, divided somewhat equally between the Di Adamo case, which we've almost gotten to the end of that, we have about another month. We have some post-trial paperwork we need to submit, and ultimately, we'll get a judgment based upon that. And then for the ongoing union negotiations, as you may know, the union negotiations have been very hard negotiations, and, um, several of the unions have met and voted and not accepted the contract terms, so that just prolongs the negotiation and costs us a little bit more for outside counsel for that reason.
Uh, the, the Adamo case, uh, how much are they suing the city for, do you know?
How much is he suing the city for? Uh, at one point, he had made a demand on the city, uh, something in the neighborhood of seven million dollars, I think it was, uh, to settle the case.
Okay, has that changed?
Well, it's, it, the jury has come back, and the jury has, has, uh, come back with a couple of different numbers, and, uh, it's for us now to go on briefs before the court to, uh, so that the court can listen to legal argument as to which of the two numbers, if any, or either, the court is required to accept.
So this is a trial by jury?
It was a trial by jury, yes, yes. The jury came back late on Friday, uh, with, uh, two different numbers, two different ways of calculating, and now it's up to the judge to decide how those two different methods of calculating get, get distilled down into one number for a judgment purpose.
Okay, so the jury is recommending two different set of numbers in terms of judgment against the city?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council President, um, give me.
I'm sorry.
Attorney body, or body, which is a body or body?
Uh, it's both, but I pronounce it body.
Okay, body. I wanna do it properly, but, um, what I have noticed is that each year you've come back to transfer funds, and most of the time is for this litigation piece. What's going on? I mean, um, why are we not able to project that when we do the budget?
Well, first of all, when we come before you every year, there's typically a direction in terms of how we approach our budget submission, and that is that the budget isn't going to be increased. So, uh, we do have an increase in litigation, and we have an increase in judgments, we have an increase in outside counsel. It's impossible for us to manage the budget with, with farming so much out and not increasing our annual budget amount. So what happens every year is we do these supplementations, that's one reason. Second?
Let me, let me just make sure I understand this, um, and both of us, let's try to keep this short, so I don't get in trouble. But, um, what I was, okay, thinking of, the money that you need transferred now, when you submit your annual budget to the mayor for his, you know, for him to do the work that he needs to do to set the, the budget, you don't include this new knowledge that you're always, um, coming back for more money?
We, we know that we're going to need more money over last year's budget for outside counsel fees, and the reason for that is because the prior year, our budget wasn't sufficient. And we know typically, we'll be able to forecast what's coming up in terms of judgments and things like that. But when we're given a, a directive that we have to level fund, we can't level fund and also meet the actual functioning of the department, where for the past two or three years, we've had to supplement.
So they won't consider, they wouldn't consider this, this, um, money that you're now asking for?
Did I submit this money?
No, no, no. I say the money that you're now asking for. Let's say when we look at the budget, they wouldn't consider that that's part of the level funding, since you've had to come up year after year after year for more dollars to litigation services?
If, if, if the prior year budgets that we're basing our level funding on wasn't sufficient to meet our needs, it's unlikely that the following year's budget, based on an insufficient number, is still going to meet our needs. But nonetheless, every year, we've been able to supplement the appropriation, so we understand that process and we've worked through it. In this case, this year, we have a couple of different things that we couldn't quite predict anyway, in terms of the expense. The first one is the fact that we don't know when we go into union negotiations, what the union's response is going to be. We don't know whether they're going to accept what we offer, we don't know what their counteroffers are going to be, and we don't know that ultimately, when we come down to what we think is a final position, whether they're going to accept it or reject it. Depending upon their responses, of course, that can increase or decrease the numbers that we use for outside counsel for purpose of contract negotiations, first. Second?
But those collective bargaining, um, meetings, uh, that doesn't happen every year, does it?
No, we typically do them every two or three years. We have, we've been out of contract with most of our unions for about six, seven, eight years. So we, we desperately needed to get contracts going with our unions.
And this is what this, this amount now will help you do?
Yes.
So it's both these cases with the schools and stuff, and, um, the cases with?
This is?
No, that is not a judgment.
It's not the cases with the schools. One of the attorneys who has helped, who has helped us with the Di Adamo case is an expert in building construction law. And because we were looking at the systems and the operating, the operation and the maintenance and repair of the building, we brought in an expert in construction law, and we availed ourselves of his knowledge so that we could line up a good group of experts in particular fields, HVAC, roofing, and, and so forth.
Because you have one of your own attorneys working on, let's say, that, um, that case. So when that person left, you had no choice but to?
Well, I'm sorry.
To hire outside counsel to do the work?
No, and, no, good question, but no, this is, this has been handled by Attorney Ruano from the start. She tried the case, it was tried over the course of three and a half weeks. She's still with the city, she's, she, her, her last day is March fourth. But because this is a three and a half week trial, that is a major trial. And because of that, we brought in outside counsel to assist and support her, because the rest, because, because the, the rest of the work doesn't stop. So we brought in an expert to do two things. One, just to be a second attorney. When she's interrogating a witness, he's going through the books and pulling out the next exhibits, so that we're ready to either cross-examine or to examine our expert. And the second?
Second chair?
Exactly, and the second thing was because he is in particular an expert in construction law, he gave us some strategic ideas, as well as provided us with access to known experts that we could use, and, and formulated the way that the questions would come down.
Wonderful questions, thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. One last question?
Yes, one last question, if I may, because I was going to wrap it up, because I'm not getting to where I want to get to. But basically, the four hundred and seventy thousand, um, is something that you today need because you had additional, um, con- subcontracts with other firms?
Yes, primarily, we're talking outside counsel fees for the Di Adamo case, and expert witness fees and costs, expenses, and transcripts, lots of depositions in that case. There was a period of time where there were maybe three, four weeks where there were depositions every day, almost.
Yeah, and this does not include any settlements or anything like that?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Any additional questions, councilors?
Council President.
Councilor La Plan.
So during, through you, during the Budget and Finance Committee, I asked if we could get, in very general terms, what the money was going to be spent for, and I noticed these questions are just being asked right now. Were you able to provide that information for the coun- for the council? Through you?
I don't think I did, and I think that I forgot.
All right, so just for the, this would be helpful in the future, I'm not going to derate this or make it go any further, but if we could help with that, and, and at the subcommittee level, try to move these things through so we could help other councilors?
That's right.
Get the information so that we don't have to have to, we can move on to other questions, I'm sure the council would have loved to have asked rather than take the time for that. But there's a learning moment here, so I don't have any other questions, I'll be prepared to move the question if there's?
Any further questions on this side of the, okay? Councilor Maldonado?
Mr. Bodi, the, uh, the amounts that were submitted by the jury to the judge, is that public information now?
I believe it is.
It is?
I believe it is, yes.
Do you know the amounts?
Do I know the amounts? Uh, I, I think I do, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I don't? I don't want to, A, say them and be wrong, because I heard them third-hand. B, I don't think respectfully that this is the right forum to be discussing them at this time.
Okay, okay.
They will be, there will be a permanent number at some point within the next thirty days. I'm not trying to hide any of this. If somebody wants to have a conversation with Attorney Ruano or the mayor, that's perfectly fine, or with me, that's perfectly fine. I just don't think at this stage where the trial is ongoing that that would be inappropriate, uh, this would be an appropriate forum to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. I am sure that eventually, uh, we will need to look at whether this lawsuit was avoidable or not, and whether, uh, personal eagles are playing, are playing a role in what taxpayers are going to be paying dearly from our pockets, because somebody feels that, that they are the head honchos to make decisions that are hurting the city. But that's something in the future that probably we can discuss.
Okay, if there's no further questions, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, communication from the mayor, city officials, and city attorney, there's none. Uh, appropriation orders and resolutions, document sixty-sixteen is a loan authorization. Water and Sewer Department is a loan authorization for the sewer system evaluation survey on the amount of nineteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and it was placed on the agenda by Brian Peña, Water and Sewer Commissioner, and it's going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Next, it's committee reports, document fifty-two sixteen, election workers' pay rates to be reviewed. It was based on the agenda by Mr. William Maloney, the city clerk, uh, Mr. Vice President and Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Council President, the Budget Committee voted, the unanimous vote to send this up to the council with a recommendation to, as a review. There's no real action required for it, but as an actual, just a, a review, so I make that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Items to the election workers' pay rates.
Motion has been made and properly second, uh, are there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those?
Just quickly?
Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, if, um, if even the chair can just tell me, um, if, just to make sure I'm clear, we've already paid everybody, this is a new rate that we're looking at for the, the upcoming election, the presidential election?
So let me take a stab at this, Council, Mr. Clerk. So, uh, we're going to, to, uh, through you, Mr. President, we're, we are, we have an extra hour in the election that's coming up on March the first.
That's correct.
And because of that, uh, I'll cut right to the chase, uh, we need to be able to compensate those individuals who are going to be spending an extra hour as the polls working with a different pay increase. The pay increase, it's already been budgeted for, um, he has, the clerk has within his budget, there's no need to make a transfer. But it, it equates to twenty dollars individual more than what they're, uh, were going to get because of that extra hour of work.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Council President.
If I may add, that slightly? I may add that slightly, the, the total amount of this expenditure would be three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to cover all poll workers. I would need a vote of the council in order to pay them, I couldn't pay them, I would imagine in my own pocket to pay them that amount, that stipend amount, typically because that stipend money would come from the state, rather than from the city. The state has already reduced its, its funding, uh, in recognition of the additional hour that the city stays open, uh, for polls during municipal elections. So this would bridge that gap, for this election only, in order to make it completely across the board for every election that would re-present after with the next budget.
So then it's just the, the rate that we're approving, because you're getting the money from the state?
No, the rate would stay the same, this would be an additional stipend in recognition to what they would have got if the state had provided, uh, the supplement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilors, are there any further questions?
What do you need for, through you, Mr. President, what does the clerk need from us?
I would ask for an approval from the council in order that I can, uh, justify payment. I thought it was made clear by Mr. Iannello that we needed something that, that we could point to to say that it was approved by the council as a supervisor of election, that the additional twenty dollar stipend?
What would be the best, through you, Mr. President, how would you word that motion?
I would, a motion for the twenty dollar stipend to be paid for this election, for the presidential primary specifically.
So motion?
A motion has been made.
Second.
Wasn't there a motion?
We had a motion before.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Second.
And properly second, is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, now moving on to withdrawal items, there's none. All business, document two twenty-four fifteen, no parking in front of Twenty Monmouth, was placed on the agenda by Councilor Reyes, uh, Councilor Reyes.
I believe that's going down to ordinance committee, yeah?
Want to be, to be referred to ordinance? It's going down to the ordinance Subcommittee. Document two eighty-one fifteen, the city of Lawrence Complete Street Policy and Regulation to be reviewed, was placed on the agenda by Don McCarthy, it's also going to the ordinance Subcommittee. Uh, councilors, are there any table matters that you would like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Abdu?
Point of inquiry?
Yes.
Didn't we already dispense of the complete street policy and regulation last month?
We, we did, uh, took a vote on it, uh, we did receive also an email, at least I received an email from, uh, Mr. McCarthy in reference to this item. Uh, there are some revisions that he would like to make, um, and that's why he has been brought back to the table.
Thank you.
No problem. Any further questions? Any, any table matters that you would like to discuss? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business, document fifty-four sixteen, Lawrence Police Department Fiscal Year two thousand and sixteen, State nine-one-one Department of Training Grant, an EMD regulatory grant on the amount of one hundred, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and nine and eighty-one dollars, and it's going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document fifty-five sixteen, Making a Difference, Request Permission to Use a Campaign in Common on August sixth, two thousand and sixteen, from twelve to six, for a religious event, is going to the ordinance Subcommittee. Document fifty-six sixteen, Dedication, Corner of Three Hundred Forty-two South Union Street and Cambridge Street for Private First Class Thomas A. Sullivan, and it was placed on the agenda by Council Vice President La Plan and Councilor Abdu. It's going to the ordinance Subcommittee. Document fifty-seven sixteen, Disclosure by Municipal Employee Gabriel Soto, going to the ordinance Subcommittee. Document fifty-eight sixteen, Iglesia Fuente de Salvación Incorporated, Request Permission to Use a Campaign in Common on August twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, from three to eight P.M. It's going down to the ordinance Subcommittee. Document fifty-nine sixteen, Handicap Parking, Sixty, Jennifer Street, Marie Guzman, is going to the ordinance Subcommittee. Councilors, uh, when will be the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting?
Council President, next Fin- Budget and Finance Committee will be the twenty-fourth, a week from tomorrow.
Councilor Reyes, ordinance?
Next Thursday.
Okay, um, are there any meetings for housing?
Yes, there is one.
What day?
Next Monday.
Okay, Monday the twenty-second?
We have one item.
We do?
Okay.
So the one, put it together at seven, and then the other one, seven-thirty?
Ordinance, ordinance is going to be on Thursday.
Uh, personnel? Uh, Mr. Vice Chair from personnel?
I don't know that we have any items.
We don't have any new items, uh, so, no, no meeting at this point. Councilor Rodriguez?
Any of the members from the housing committee will mind if we change it for Thursday at seven instead of, uh, Monday? And then we, and then we can have the ordinance, um, meeting right away at seven-thirty, if, if you?
So the ordinance is going to be at seven-thirty instead of?
Seven-thirty, yeah.
Okay.
And then we have one item on the housing that we can, uh?
Okay.
Committee and the whole?
Uh, so that's fine with me, the committee and the whole will meet, um, next Tuesday, the twenty-third.
Okay, at what time?
At seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
As a reminder about the other issue.
Yes, uh, councilors?
Mr. President, I have a question. Is the committee as a whole is going to include in the agenda the, an item that is pending regarding the, uh, the stipend?
All the, all the items at our table in that committee should appear.
And, uh, I have a serious concern that Mr. Iannello has still not provided an information that was requested under, under the public, uh, release, and he has failed after two months to submit the information that was requested. And I'm concerned that this information is still being held on purpose. I believe the information is being held on purpose to prevent this council from investigating a matter that may be illegal. We already voted, this council already voted to request from Mr. Iannello, uh, the information, and he's still refusing to provide the information, and I would like to know why. What is going on that this information after two months have not been provided to this council?
Do you wish to make a motion?
When it's a matter of importance.
Do you wish to make a motion and send correspondence to Director Iannello?
Yes, I do, I would like to make the motion to, to Mr. Iannello to provide an explanation as to why he's still refusing to provide the information that was requested after two months.
There's second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilor.
I feel more comfortable making, requesting that he get that information to us through you in time for the committee and the whole meeting, a week from Wednesday. At that point, if he doesn't have it, then I think the, the colleague might have the ability then to have that concern. But to issue that concern right now, we, we still have the time to get the information prior to the committee meeting.
I believe that the information has been requested on several occasions, I have, I have asked Mr. Iannello on several occasion, and also in front of this council, so I don't think we should wait.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Council Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yeah, I think there's, um, something to think about here, that I, we want the information before, maybe you could put a date or whatever, before we have to meet, as the committee as a whole.
Well, uh, no later than Thursday.
No later than this Thursday?
Than this Thursday, so we can, so that we have enough time to review the information and ask the right questions.
Yes, okay, so I would think that, uh, the letter, you are, oh, sorry. Yeah, I was, I was thinking that it would be a good idea to try to get the information before we meet, you know, which is basically similar to what the Vice President was just talking about, um, but that we give it a date, right? And then if it doesn't happen, I don't know what we're going to do, I mean, we can't spank him or whatever, but we, we need to figure out if this council is going to be able, through you, Council President, and you Vice President, with the administration, because there is information that we need. And, um, you know, if you can help us get that information, I understand that, you know, the whole new, this whole new council, you know, with its new ventures included, that we would have a better communication with the administration and be able to get the information that we need. So, um, if, can we, who, who authored, you authored the motion?
Yeah, I, I, I said Thursday, yes.
So Thursday?
Okay.
This Thursday?
Thursday, the, the eighteen? Councilor?
Mr. President, uh, also in the letter, we should remind Mr. Iannello and Mr. Bonnet? Mr. President, also in the letter, we should remind Mr. Iannello and Mr. Bonet that they are supposed to come in front of the committee as a whole to answer questions regarding this matter.
Is that as part of your motion?
Yes.
And that was something that we already did, remember?
Any further discussion for any councilors on this side? Okay, Councilor Alvarez-Rodriguez?
Just saying that this was something that we all voted on before too. That part where we need certain department people to be involved in the discussion, like Mr. Bonet, because he understands the union stipend and the others, you know, people who are non-union, the whole bit. And he'd be able to, you know, provide us with some information as well as Mr. Iannello would be able to provide certain information.
Wonderful. Councilor LaPlante?
Just a couple of points. One is, it's been so long since we dealt with this, I don't recall the questions that were asked. That's the first one. And the second point is, each one of these departments, as I believe, actually came and actually addressed the committee on the whole. They gave some information. So, I think it would be helpful as a refresher as to what questions did they not answer that you were looking answers, through you, answers to?
It was requested, it was requested that Mr. Iannello provide a list of all the stipends that have been given in the city in addition to what has already been provided.
Okay. Okay, councilors, if there's no...
The school committee too, I mean, the school department.
School department. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor, seeing there's no, oh, one last thing. There was one item that was submitted from the agenda due to a human error, which is document 5116, Contract Service with Waste Management of Massachusetts Incorporated. It's a five-year term. It had been placed on the agenda by Mayor Rivera. I know that we've had received, it's not part of our packet right now, but we have received a copy of the documentation previously, approximately two weeks ago. We are to take action on this item before the end of the month. And I was wondering, since all of us will be here on Tuesday for the committee on the whole, we could, I'll request that we call a special meeting on that day. That way, if someone hasn't had the opportunity to review the contract, we review the contract and we will just discuss that item when we finalize our regular committee on the whole meeting. Does that sound fair to all members?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Rodriguez?
Request information for this contract, or we need to wait for the committee on the whole?
A special meeting.
We will have a special meeting. So, after the committee on the whole, we will end that meeting and a city council meeting will start, simply for the discussion of this item.
What I'm saying is, can we request information now for that special meeting?
Is there, yeah, any information that you wish? The contract, the information has been provided to us previously in reference to it.
I was going through, but I didn't see what I was looking for.
No, it's not part of our packet here, but it is in our iPads files.
I was looking for that, is what I'm saying.
I hope you find it there.
I requested through, I mean, I'm assuming that it not necessarily have to be in a formal...
Yeah, definitely not. Any information that you think, we could gladly ask, yeah.
Mr. President, has this document been submitted, has it been submitted to the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes. It actually came from, it was before the Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week on Wednesday. What happened was that there was a note made by the secretary, who was the intaker, to say that this item should have been reviewed at the full council on March 2. So, there was a human mistake when she wrote it, and instead of sending it to this regular meeting. That's why it's not before our agenda.
What's going to happen if we are not able to act on Tuesday on this matter?
We will have until the 29th of the month.
I'm sorry?
We will have until the 29th to take action. So...
Why do we have until the end of the month to take action?
Because that's when our deadline is for the contract to be approved.
But if we don't act on this contract...
It will be automatically approved.
Does, what language says that and where? Does it say that it will be automatically approved?
Yeah, I don't, I'm unaware of any automatic approval of an item unless I'm missing something. I know of no charter provision.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I'll leave that to the city attorney though.
It doesn't expire.
It expires. The contract, right now, so the current situation is the trash company, not the trash pickup, but we will dispose the company. That contract had expired, and we entered into a three-month contract with Waste Management in order to ensure that we will have a location to bring the trash that is picked up in the city of Lawrence. The city, or the mayor, wanted to enter into a five-year term with this particular company to provide the city with some savings opportunity, and that's why it has come before the council because it is over a three-year period.
No, I understand that, but if you are saying that there was a three-month extension?
Yes. A three-month contract that was already done.
Okay.
He didn't need the council...
Is there any reason why this contract was not sent within those three months so that we could have, we could have the time to review it?
We are within that period. It is my understanding.
Yeah, but you are saying that the three months expire at the end of this month? So, obviously, the administration waited almost two and a half months in order to give us the information.
That's why, we should have been taking action on this matter today. And again, as I explained, there was a human error made by the secretary who was taking the minutes on the day of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee and wrote down to be discussed on March 2. That was a clarification that I made earlier.
I just want to make sure that this council understands that we, we are not under the pressure or under, under the demand that we have to approve this by the end of the month. I want to make sure that that's the case.
We do not have to approve it. We could take action to deny, not to approve. We could take no action.
Okay, okay.
I am not saying that you have to vote one way or the other here.
Okay, thank you.
It's your call.
Council President?
Yes.
I just wanted to share that I think it is difficult, say that we would have had to vote on this today even because I don't remember getting this information before today, and it would have been really difficult for me to take action on it today.
And that is why I'm proposing that we do it at a special meeting after the committee on the whole because I don't think it's fair for us to make a decision in a document that has been, even though I have reviewed it, and I know some of us already reviewed it, we've had it for almost two weeks or three weeks, if I'm not mistaken. But I understand that not everyone had the opportunity to do so. So, asking to take action on a matter today without all nine of us having had the opportunity to review it is not fair.
So, I don't know if, maybe you can figure out a way that when a committee sends something up that they expect a vote on, that perhaps we can get whatever documents, you know, and that it be noted that there's, a vote is expected, please look at these materials.
Of course, every, we have a wonderful secretary who sends our agenda items of not just the subcommittees that we're member of.
But sometimes it's important to highlight.
Yeah, all of the subcommittees that we have as a council, and Lillian Mishett, on a weekly basis, sends the agenda, and the agenda includes not just the items that are to be discussed in the following agenda, but all of the table items as well, and we have the documentation as part of that, as part of the packet that she presents.
I would be, I would be the last person to say that Lillian doesn't do a great job.
Again, we do, I will be requesting a special meeting, councilors, if there's no further discussion. I would like to request a motion to adjourn, so moved.
I'll give you that motion, one second. But just to make sure, Council President, because it's not the first time that we receive a document and we're expected to vote on it without having had time to review it.
And I think that's why we're taking the appropriate step at this moment.
Right, so I want to just make sure that we...
But we have a motion to adjourn, and it's been properly second.
Yes, I'll give you that motion, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, Councilor Abdu, we have a...
It was also debated last week at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, was it not?
It was.
I'm not in your committee.
No, but we, as we know, most of, Mr. Chairman, most of the business of this council is to occur at the subcommittee level, is not...
That is correct.
In that we, we are also, if we're not a part of that committee, allowed to attend those committee members as citizenry and ask questions and be involved at that point, correct?
And we can also watch the videos as well as read the minutes.
Point of, point of order?
We have a motion to adjourn.
We are not supposed to, point of order, or in point of personal privilege at that, but we're not supposed to be asking question and deliberating at the subcommittee. That is in violation of the open meeting law. And, you know, if you have, if everybody has to attend every committee meeting in order to be abreast of things, then don't bother to have committees. I'm sick and tired of making that point because we cannot attend every committee meeting. So, that shouldn't be fair. It shouldn't be said that because you cannot attend a meeting or watch it on TV that you therefore, you know, have to accept the fact that everybody else discusses it and that's it. Because that is not good.
A motion to adjourn has been made. On those issues, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.